Yes.
Kimmy.
Exactly. Everybody will start off with our work session today and I'll turn it over to Dr. Paul.
Well, and I'm going to turn it over to Kent. That's an easy handout. Want to spend, Kent emailed to you just a little bit ago, but you also have a hard copy in front of you of the information that he's going to go through and, and spend some time talking about. So Kent, we'll let you take it, okay?
Okay, thank you.
I'm confused.
Why?
I guess we don't have to list anything on the special board agenda that this is a finance meeting.
This is a work session right now to go through budget.
It's also a special meeting.
Okay. The special meeting comes after the work session. The special meeting comes after the work session and you'll call that to, to order officially.
And that's what we're doing now.
This is the work session right now.
Okay, so I'm going to walk through quite a bit of information here this evening. I don't think a lot of it should be new. We've had some work sessions past few months and talked about most of these concepts, but it is important, I think, that we go back and refresh this. At the July meeting, which is coming up, you will have a big decision to make on the budget concerning the revenue neutral rate. And so we'll kind of go through that. I've got this PowerPoint, so I'll put it up on the screen here. And skip over to page three. It says budget process and timeline. The top section, I just mentioned some of the information that we do know that's pertinent to the upcoming budget decision. We know tuition and fee rates, they were set in March. We gave you the preliminary expenditure budget back in March at the update, and that really hasn't changed very much. There's a couple of minor changes. We know the state aid now, we know that we did get caught up with an additional $3.4 million in state aid this year, which had been really long overdue. And we've been informed of the college's valuation and revenue neutral rate. I received that information from the county clerk on June 7th. No real surprise there. We'd been estimating a 10% valuation increase. I think it came in about 10.8%. We're getting very close to settling negotiations, I think. We'll see how that goes at the July 12th meeting. And the last final piece of financial information that we wait for is the year end unencumbered cash balances. We won't have those until sometime soon before the July 12th meeting. But I have been working with Carrie in the accounting office and we, we think we have a fairly good estimate of where our unencumbered cash will come in. So those are things that we know now. We've talked about. The final decisions that are, will be made will be the approval of the legal budget and operating budget. And of course, at that time, the board approves the amount of taxes to be levied. Typically, we've done that at the August board meeting with a special meeting in July. Depending on whether or not the board approves a resolution of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate. If that is not approved at the July 12th meeting, then that old timeline is still in effect. If the board does approve a resolution to exceed the revenue neutral rate at the July 12th meeting, then we have up until September actually to hold the public hearing and the revenue neutral hearing. And so I'll kind of go through that as we walk down through here a little farther. And there's a lot of information here, but feel free to stop me if you have questions or you want to remark.
I have a question. Back in May, you thought the evaluation of BCC would be around 10 and a half percent and it came out to 10.8, you said?
We, we had used 10% in our budget estimate that we gave you in, in March and that's what we had been using along.
Not in May.
I'm not sure what.
Okay.
I know that, but we had a final now, so that's what we'll use.
Okay, so it's going to be 10.8. That's locked in now.
Yeah, there's a, actually, if you want to take a look at that and skip over to page five, this is the actual document that we get from the county clerk, which tells us what our valuation is. So the new valuation is 938,614,247. Last year's assessment, assessed valuation was 848,351,216. Our mill rate last year was 15.262 and our revenue neutral rate is 13.795. So we'll talk more about those figures as we go through here, but this is how we officially get notified of that information.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Going back to page three, which is the first page verbiage there. The next formal action will be on the 12th. And the administration plans to recommend that the board approve a resolution of intent to exceed the revenue neutral rate at that time. What that does is if you pass that resolution, that would give us the ability to actually use any or all of the valuation increase for tax revenue to the college in the upcoming year. If you don't pass the resolution of intent, then that, that means you, you can't go above the revenue neutral rate, which is the mill levy, which would give us the exact amount of taxes that we levied last year, as long as the valuation doesn't go down between now and November. If you don't pass the intent to exceed and the valuation would go down, we would probably get even less tax revenue next year than we got this year. And be happy to go through details on that. You know, if you have questions.
It's impossible. The values will go down this year.
Typically, they've gone up. There are.
Right, but I mean this year.
Things that can, it's not impossible.
Well, this year, overall, it's 10 to 20% average.
That, yeah, that's not what causes it to go down between July or June when they give me the estimate and November when they finalize it. That can be done by abatements or people coming in protesting, comes off. So it's possible it can go up or down.
I'm, it's my understanding that we set the total taxes levied period regardless of the mill. So if we set 12.9, it's 12.9 collected.
Yeah.
Minus the delinquencies.
Because of the new revenue neutral rate statute, it is possible that you would set it an amount to be levied. But because of the revenue neutral rate statute, if the valuation would go down and the mill levy can't come up, then we could actually have less tax revenue collect or assessed by the county than what you asked for. It's probably not, but I mean, it's very.
It'd be very miniscule.
It'd be very miniscule.
Very unlike.
And the, the history is that the valuation has gone up between now and November. So it's.
Yeah, because the valuation appeals are mostly settled. I mean, vast majority of people who appealed their property valuations have already.
They're not going to go up zero.
Right.
I mean, they might get a knockdown to five if they have dilapidated structure.
We appealed one of our properties and we've already gotten the result from it. So if you disagree at that point, then you have to take it to the state level and you can pay under protest.
Right.
But most people don't go to that extreme.
I've done that. That's fine.
Yeah. Do what?
So I've done that before, the three judge panel.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's very unlikely that it would change significantly. So kind of mentioned these timelines a little bit. At the bottom of page three there talks about if the.
Can I break you up for just a second? With the intent, with the intent, you still have flexibility. Even if they vote to, with an intent to exceed, there's still flexibility then afterwards to decide where they want to be correct.
That's correct. If you do pass the resolution of intent, then we have to notify the county clerk and the county clerk will take that information. And they'll take the information from the college, the city, the county, and all the taxing entities in the county. They will send it out to taxpayers and show them the potential difference in their individual taxes. And then we are obligated to have a revenue neutral public hearing. And the colleges, entities, tax entities that have done the revenue neutral in the past generally have the revenue neutral hearing and the budget hearing on the same day. So you would do the revenue neutral hearing first and then if, then you would do the public budget hearing, like we normally have a budget, public budget hearing. So you'd have to do two hearings. And at that time during those hearing, after those hearings, then there would be a vote on the amount of taxes to be levied. And at that time, the board can do whatever they choose. So you could, you could take the valuation that would bring us up to the mill rate that we had last year. That's what the administration recommendation is. You could not take that. You could go to the revenue neutral rate or you could go anywhere in between. And that's, that's a choice that the board has at that time. That's all contingent on passing the resolution of intent. If you don't pass the resolution of intent, then you would just go back to the normal budget hearing process and you would not be able to go above last year's rate.
I have zero intent to raise that or change it.
So.
And I think I really. Say one thing real quick. For years and years and years, we've been mill levy, mills, that's two different things. It's this many mills on this property for this thousand dollars for, and this is your mill levy. It's 12 points, zebzubzubzub. It makes no sense. It's, it's confusing on purpose, I believe. And now it's no longer the mill levy determines what we tax. What we tax is the dollar amount we tax. It's understandable. If we're going to tax them 13 million, it's 13 million. It's not 15.26 because of this adjustment or that adjustment. It's how much money are we taking from the residents period in a dollar amount? And the mill levy does what it does. It's not confusing to people anymore. It's the dollar amount we tax the citizens regardless of whatever the mill numbers do. I just want to make that clear.
But it seems to me if we don't agree to go with the revenue neutral rate, we'll be at a disadvantage.
Well, we'll have less money because we've not increased taxes yet.
But if the valuation goes up.
Right. But that's the problem. We, you get every government entity, we have inflation. So now all of a sudden your house is worth more and you owe more taxes, but you're not making any more money. But we don't have to raise it either. And then inform everybody in the county, like, hey, we intend to take, we intend to take more money from you right now when gas is 450 a gallon and your house is worth more and you have less money in your pocket. Oh yeah, we're going to take some more. Like in Wichita, all over Wichita, tuition freeze next year. Except for you people in Butler County who pay taxes. Taxes going up a million three. Ha ha. That's a terrible message.
So if we could get back to the, for the next part of the, the report there really talks about this. We understand the administration's not blind that, that people get taxed. They don't like to get taxed. So at the top of page four there, I tried to summarize, I think, why we believe it's important for you at least to consider the tax, taxes, mill levy staying the same and take advantage of the valuation increase. The, the problem from the operational point of view of the college is that as inflation happens, and if we're in a period of 8% inflation, the $14 million, $15 million that we levy in taxes, the buying power of that goes down by $1.6 million next year. We've, we've faced the same situation from the state for years. For years and years, they have funded us at less of an increase than the inflation rate. We got a nice jump this year, but we don't see that that's going to continue to go up. Historically, there, in the past 20 years, there have been two different times that the state has significantly increased the state aid to community colleges. And in the years subsequent to that, there, there were practically no increases. So that leaves, you know, tuition as the only thing that we could, could raise. But if we're not able to raise the, two of our three main sources of revenue. We're in a fall behind. Now, we're in a position with some of our reserves that we're not going to go bankrupt right away. But I think we, what we're asking as administration is you look at this in the long term. Because if, if we continue continuously decline to take the valuation increase as revenue, how are we going to keep up with inflation? And one of the main things that is a problem right now is for the college is trying to hire people at the wages that we pay. How are we going to fund raises and keep up with inflation? If we don't have any sources of revenue that aren't completely fixed. And so, you know, I think I summarized our rationale there. I won't go through and read it word for word, but you can take a look at it. There's some other information here on page four that talks about the revenue neutral rate. And you know, down in the middle there, there's a potential impact to residential property, somebody with a $300,000 home. If we were to take the valuation of the current year next year, in other words, go up and take the valuation increase, it would cost somebody with a $300,000 home 51 additional dollars next year. And I know there's different ways to look at that, but we wanted you to have that information.
I have a question.
Okay.
Kent, I'm trying to be fair about this, but it's, it's really tough for me to understand and justify more taxation. I mean, I totally understand the levy. I understand the revenue neutral rate is based on anticipated valuations. But what I don't understand is in your household.
You need to talk into your microphone, Julie, please.
My household budget's a lot different than that.
Well, I understand that, but my budget, I have to cut something out.
You're asking me for personal opinion?
No, I'm not trying to get personal with you. I'm just trying to say that in my household, I've had to cut things in order to suffer the increase in gas, increase in insurance, increase in all these other things. And I, I just wondered if anybody had taken a long-term look or even a three-year plan look at what we can cut because we have dropped a significant percentage as far as students.
We do take a, a look at the expenditure budget. Really, that takes up a good deal of our administrative time all through the fall and the spring. There were hours and hours that went into the budget recommendation that the administration is making to you. And we believe it's a fair recommendation to keep the quality of the school.
Okay.
Yes, I, I've had to make a few cuts at home.
I would like to make the point that I don't care how much somebody's house is valued. That's their $51. That's not our $51 because we want it. That's immoral. And we can't.
I think you simply.
You're taking someone's money.
What's the value of, I mean, to talk about.
Right, you're, you're saying they get value in return, but you're taking their money because you can spend it better than them. That's not.
No, I think it's just putting it in perspective as to what it really means to each person.
I think that's helpful.
It doesn't, it doesn't devalue what it means to anybody, but.
That took them time of their life to earn that $51 and we're taking it because we need it and we want it.
But that's, I mean, that's the nature of taxes overall. This, this quantifies it. It doesn't make it more or less right. I mean, that's your own.
Well, we're taking more than last year.
But it puts, puts a value on it. That's a proposal.
We're assuming they're, they're creating more input because they're more efficient next year.
This is, I think, what Porritt said. It's the nature of taxation from the city to county. And I would just say that, you know, if you want to vote against it, that you're right. And I understand your position. What I'm saying is from our point of view, we'd like the board as a whole to consider this, to keep the quality of this institution and allow us time maybe to look for cuts in the future.
This, and, and I think it's important to, I mean, the discussion is really important, but what we're trying to do is present information to, to all of you so that you can make an informed decision. This isn't set in stone by any means, because you guys are the ones that get to make the decision. But we're trying, Kent is trying, and his team and the administrators are trying to put enough information in front of you that you can understand where we're at. You can understand the rationale behind why we are proposing the budget that we're proposing. So you can make informed decisions and so, so you can ask informed questions. So.
But I'm here as, I'm here for this purpose only.
Yeah, we understand your perspective.
No, I get it. But the taxpayers are also paying attention. And we, in May, we bought a $10,085 inch monitor with a couple thousand dollars worth of hookups for it. That's extravagant.
We've explained to you the reason.
No, I know.
Behind the purchase of that and, and the rationale and, and the importance of it.
That one I haven't been explained to yet. But anyway, there's, I didn't send the email yet. I've been too busy.
Well, I, I find it, I find it odd that you've been critical of the college not being managed enough like a business.
Correct.
Yet you're saying that we should prospectively, before we have to decide, we should just automatically give up on $1.3 million in revenue before we have to.
Right, but you guys voted, so decided not to raise tuition.
You, you know, you know that our expenses.
Generate new students to generate.
That's not, that's not fair.
We don't know what our programs are profitability wise and the board has refused to find that out.
Now, we have.
Shelby, that is completely false. We are waiting on getting the information to be able to make those decisions. To say that we've refused to ask for it is false. To say that administration has taken no steps to increase enrollment is false.
No.
Now, you, you can, you can criticize or talk about the success of those steps, but to say that they've done nothing to try to increase enrollment is absolutely flat out wrong. And it's reckless to say it.
We've increased to none at all.
But that doesn't mean that we haven't been trying.
Exactly. But it doesn't, it doesn't.
Doesn't merit the tax increase.
Taxpayers and you have no track record of success.
We know that our expenses next year are going to be greater than they are this year.
Right.
Inflation, inflation affects us just like it affects all the taxpayers.
Doesn't that mean we could maybe identify not next meeting or six months down the road? Doesn't that mean that we should have already been identifying what we can reduce costs?
That's part of what we're doing in setting the budget. I mean, we haven't, and we haven't made those decisions yet because we haven't set the budget. That, that's where I'm going with my comments to Shelby to start this. We can still decide when we set the budget to reduce our, our ask.
Two million more dollars.
By whatever it is. We don't have to commit to that right now and we shouldn't be committing to it right now when we don't even have a final budget in front of us.
Who trusts the government agency to demand more taxes? But we won't take it all. We'll, we'll just maybe take it if we need it. Of course, we need it.
We are the seven people that make that decision.
Right, I know, but there's, there's no argument to say we're going to possibly raise it, but not raise it.
No, the, the argument is we don't have to make that decision right now and there's no reason to tie our hands and do it.
But next month.
There's no reason to do it next month. We're still not going to have a final budget yet. What, why should?
My decision is I'm not going to raise it, period. And I'm advocating for that as hard as I can. That's why I'm here.
And that's, and we're, and we're disagreeing on that.
Right, no, I understand.
So I, I have to understand.
Continue on with the.
Kim has a question real quick. She's trying to speak up twice.
My, my only thing that I wanted to say when you're talking about short-term versus long-term. You know, I, I understand the consequences and the impacts and everything that can go here, you know, with this particular tax increase. But to say that we need to make this decision tonight based on the future, as Kent said, this is a year-to-year thing. And this year, we got $3.5 million from the state that we didn't get last year. And that's not put in this document. It's not like, hey, we've got this big saving grace because it is that. And maybe we can keep from impacting the taxpayer because of that 3.5 million. And then we'll look over ways that we can try to, you know, figure out what we're going to do from the increase in enrollment. Increase in enrollment, I, I don't think it's really fair just to criticize, you know, the administration or whoever, because it is, it's a statewide problem. And I don't know who.
It's a nationwide problem.
Yeah, exactly. And I don't know who it was that sent us the email, but it had the article about, you know, our state colleges cutting certain programs because they're at a place where they have to. And we're not immune from that. So that's my concern is that, is that the charts we're given are always just totally centered around taxes. And to me, there's other issues going on. And we do have the thing to accommodate for the inflation. It's the 3.5 million from the state. It's there. We, so we could give everybody a break and not, you know, ask for, oh, maybe we're going to make a different decision two months from now and just make the decision that, hey, we've already been covered. And I don't think that's too much to ask either.
Well, you don't have to make the decision tonight. This is just for discussion. No, it's not official decision tonight.
Well, but if you don't, if you don't notice it up to do, you have to make the official vote July 12th. You can't do it tonight. But if we, but we have to notice it up now that we might on July 12th.
No, July 12th.
July 12th.
Okay.
It's July 12th when you make the official decision. This is just discussion tonight.
But you could jolly well do it tonight if you so wish to say, hey, the majority will not.
It'd be nice to not talk about it.
No, because it's a work session.
Wouldn't that be great?
We have a executive session.
We already have an agenda separate intersection, which we don't modify.
Two-thirds majority can modify it. It can be done, is what I say. It can be done. I'm not saying, I'm not saying it's going to be done. I said it could be.
Okay, let's move on.
Yeah.
Kent, the floor is yours again.
Okay, next section in the information I give you talks about the operating budget summary.
Which page? I'm sorry.
Page seven.
Page seven.
The two main, main assumptions here for, that the administration has made for no, no change in student credit hours, no change in the mill levy rate. We've talked a lot about the mill levy rate. On the expenditure recommendation, there are several items that are additions to, over the current year budget. And I've listed those there for you. The payroll, we're anticipating a 5% raise in the budget and half a percent for equity adjustment. We have put 495,000 in for marketing in court for our strategic goals of stabilizing and increasing enrollment. There's an additional 200,000 for IT. We talked about this at the time. We raised the technology access charge to raise that $200,000 to help provide more technology improvements for student access. And there is an additional 160,000 for athletics to cover previous underfunding and bring equity to various programs within athletics. And we are asking for one new position in financial aid primarily for the extra workload for the Kansas Promise Scholarship Act.
Could you explain the athletic sentence to me? To bring equity to various programs, which specifically.
I'd probably ask Bill to do that since next morning.
With what we're doing as part of that $160,000 is to cover some operational budgets that have been underfunded for a number of years. But we also have, in some of the women's sports, we have only assistant coaches, a part-time coach. And in the men's sports, we have, we have all, we have some full-time assistant coaches. And so part of this funding will bring those women's assistant coaches, like in softball and in soccer and volleyball up to full-time. So that we, so that we aren't just to create, so we create, yes, we create equity. So that's, that's part of this $160,000.
What, what part is the underfunded?
Oh, gosh, I'd have to go back. I don't remember how much the, how much were the salary increases, Shelby?
Well, now you're talking about Title IX, right? The salary.
Yeah.
Okay, well, before you said something about the underfunded of some programs.
Budget lines are, the budget lines are underfunded, but I can't tell you the split of those dollars.
It's probably 105 to 55. 55 would be the salaries. 105 would cover the other. We made a major budget. We made a major budget cut. We had, we made a major budget cut as a part of COVID. We were able to, to withstand that because we didn't travel. The travel for the teams are the same, or I mean, are mandated by the Jayhawk Conference. So those are games we have to go to. Um, two of those trips are to Iowa next year for football, et cetera, et cetera. Our, our, our non-payroll budget is less now than it was in 2015. Yet the cost for travel and all of those things has gone up. So we can't cover that with the existing dollars that we have in the budget. That's why we're requesting the extra money.
This, again, I think also is what Shelby's talking about. If we knew I want fair athletics, let me just state that right up front. But it would be very helpful if we knew what programs were actually at least breaking even and which ones were costing us the most money. There have been several community colleges that have dropped different programs. Uh, Fort Scott dropped football and so forth and so on in order to, uh, meet the changing influx of income. And I mean, changing influx. So I'm just kind of wondering where that's all going, if there's some kind of registration or some kind of worksheet that we can have that says, hey, you know what? For every game we have over here at the stadium, we lose.
I would, I would venture to guess that most of our athletic programs are in the red right now.
I think if you look at the variance report that Kent sent you, it'll show you the, it'll show you the budget lines for the, for the athletic.
It shows me the budget lines, but it doesn't really tell me what we take in specifically for that activity such as a game.
Well, we don't make money on the ticket sales.
Right. Bill, not to
We just don't.
Be rude, but I wouldn't like to have a guess of what they're doing. I would like to know what they're doing. I mean, we should know exactly what, what's what.
What do you mean?
How many away and expenses, every program, what it makes exactly.
Part of the softs and losses.
The line item budgets that I believe you have shows where each athletic program is right now, and I believe they're all in the red. Some more than others. It depends on postseason and those kinds of things where it ended up. And I thought you already had that information. Is that correct?
We have the, we have the expenditure budgets. Um, what, what I hear, correct me if I'm wrong, but the idea of there's a revenue to offset the, the athletic expenditures. And there really is no revenue to offset the athletic expenditures. Now, we do get state aid, uh, on those students and, and, um, you know, we can delve into that in the future if that's what you want to see. I think that's part of the BKD athletic.
Right, that's why I'm.
That's exactly right. Yeah.
But I've been, I mean, I've always been under the, I'm not a sports guy. But I've always been under the impression like K-State, any of the places with big football. Now, I understand they bring in tons of money to the university and that helps fund everything. Whereas we're, it doesn't, it doesn't help K-State.
It does not happen at Butler.
I under, I understand that. But I'm saying for a bigger college like that, it does, absolutely does. But for us to do everything as a small community college might not make sense. But we don't know because we don't have the data. I'm not saying shutting them down.
Here's what I would also say to you out of all of the, I mean, if you're looking at enrollment and everything, athletics consistently every year has all of their spots full. They don't lose enrollment because they continue to bring in the same number of athletes. Those athletes live in the residence halls, the room and board, they pay the, you know, tuition fees. And so there aren't any enrollment decreases on the athletic side.
I understand that. I've, I've brought that up before to Dr. Mohammed. It's, we've got full ride scholarships constantly full, plus all of the scholarships of our kids who are all on the employee benefit. They're all full ride. But we don't generate revenue from those. But scholarship, it's not. So that increases the amount of expenditures we have per credit hour that's not bringing in revenue per credit hour.
I think we should be clear though, not, not all athletes are on full ride scholarships.
No, no, no. But I mean, just because it's full doesn't mean they're generating as much income as somebody who's not an athlete. Especially if the program's not generating.
270, 270 to 300, somewhere in there on an annual basis. Some of those will include walk-ons that are full pay.
And what the scholarships for athletics are around a million? Or am I getting that wrong last year?
Mine have.
We'd have to look at the numbers.
I'd have to look at the scholarship numbers to get the exact.
But a lot of that money is privately donated.
Yeah, some of it.
Right.
He probably knows some. He, Tom doesn't fund the scholarship, the athletic scholarship.
It's in, it's in the budget. I just can't remember what it is.
No, I'll tell you. K-State doesn't depend on the fans in the stands of either KU. They depend on television revenue. They depend on marketing revenue, and they depend on, on the big contracts. That's how it goes.
But if we go to the football field on opening day, and it's 10% full, I would question why, what's the importance of Butler football? To have the conversation, just put it on the table. I'm not asking anything because, should talk about everything and, and then.
Want to keep going? Yeah, I wish, I could have formed my questions if I'd had this sooner, but maybe, maybe I could form them as we're going through.
All I know is, is I'm a season ticket holder. And gladly pay for it.
Kent, please, just keep, keep moving. If we have questions, we'll, we'll holler.
Okay, um. So the, um, want to spend just a little time going through the, um, the operating budget and a little bit of time talking about our cash reserves, because I think those are both important aspects that, um, should, I get a handle on. And hopefully before the, um, July 12th meeting, I'm going to skip down to the operating budget. She's on page nine, 10, 11, and 12 for the current, um, budget recommendation.
We don't have a page nine. Kent, it's numbering.
It kind of goes OB.
Oh, yeah, you'll go down to OB one. I'm sorry.
OB one, okay.
Yeah, OB, I, that's short for an operating budget.
One canobie.
Yeah, operating budget one. Um, and the first thing you see there is a graph of our unencumbered cash estimates. These are estimates over the next three years. And, um, the red line that goes across is our 10 and a half percent expenditure target. So you can see that right now we are considerably above that. And with the, um, variables that we use to project a budget, uh, it would bring it back down, um, over that period of time. Let me go through this quickly. Um, the next page shows you some of the, um, the variables that we use in this projection for the three years. Uh, we've used a tuition increase of 4% over the next two years. We don't anticipate any additional state aid. The state aid $3 million that we got is in that projection that I'm showing you. It's in the revenue projection for next year. One of the things that, you know, it's easy to say, well, you got $3 million, you should be able to get that back. The problem is if we didn't have that $3 million, we would have been showing you a, a budget that was $2 million in the hole. And we've been underfunded by the state for 20 years, and they, now that they made up a good probably stuff to where we should have been, but we should have been getting that all along. And, um, you know, with, with the, um, with the loss of enrollment, other pressures that we've had on our revenues, uh, we would have been in a severe, um, we wouldn't have been able to offer a raise this year. And we would have been spending down our cash reserves in order to keep the expenditure level that it's at. That, um, projection that we're showing.
No, I mean, exactly.
Well, we don't know exactly. We're going to have our year end in a couple of days, and we'll, we'll know exactly when the audit's done. But we will have an unaudited, um, cash reserve for you, uh, by the 12th.
Okay, great.
And, and, and if you let me get to that section, there's a section in here on cash reserves where I've made an estimate of what our year-end cash reserves are. As far as the operating budget, and this would be on OB three, OB three canobie. We anticipate being at 9.7 million dollars at the end of this year, which is actually about $4 million over our, 10 and a half percent target. And, you know, the budget recommendation that we're making would allow us to keep funding the budget, uh, have raises, um, have a 5% increase to non-payroll to help cover inflation, and would gradually bring that budget down over the next three years, excuse me, that, um, cash balance down to very close to the 10 and a half percent at the end of those three years. So, um, would you like to, questions on that? I'd like.
Has it always been 10 and a half percent that you try and attain?
No, it's been, it was 15 and a half percent at one time, and the, over the years, the board has changed it. And, um, one of the reasons probably that the 10 and a half percent works for us is because we have some other reserves on hand. 10 and a half percent is very low compared to other community colleges.
It is?
Yeah.
Shouldn't we strive to be higher then?
Well, we'd love to be higher. Um, there are some mitigating circumstances, and part of that is, um, the other reserves that we have, I think as long as we have those, we start spending down those other reserves. We're in a pretty good position right now because the HERF budget that HERF grants allowed us to bring about, I think it's about $6 million into the, the college reserves. Now, we, uh, have put together some plans for that to help with deferred maintenance and things like that. That's part of the presentation later on here. Which we haven't done a lot of in the past. We're almost a 60-year-old campus. And if we don't have reserves for deferred maintenance, then what happens is you come up like we did with the uh, IT infrastructure five years ago, and the only way you can fund it is to go in debt to do it. So, um, that's part of the overall equation. That's why, so I think it's important you understand where we're at with the, uh, operating budget, but also with cash reserves.
So if you totaled all the reserves up, how much would that be? 1%?
Well.
I think we have about 30 million.
Hey, it would, it wouldn't be a real, uh, accurate percentage, because what we do is we take the, the operating budget cash balancing and take it as a percent of the operna, operating, um, expenditures. So there's a percentage there. If you look at all the cash balances, and if you want to skip over to that, you can scroll down. It's on CR1, CR short for cash reserve, Shelby.
Oh, I just had a question. I, I was thinking of a number, we, when we built the buildings in Andover, didn't about $8 million of that come from cash reserves?
Uh, 4 million came from cash reserve, I think, the bar at 4 million.
That's another thing I find too. If we have all these, it will get spent on something, and I'm not sure we need or needed a giant campus in Andover for 70% of the students we once had. Is that the best business decision instead of focusing on?
That, that.
I don't know. It's either here or there.
That's, that's a decision long ago made by other.
We're, we're sitting here with an extra five or $6 million. We will get the thing of like, hey, we could totally use this for this new building or this new thing. You know what they say about hindsight.
Well, we did have that reserve of the building that was sold.
I'm going to, I'm going to jump in here for just a minute and defend the administration. People around here are very conscious and very good stewards of the money. We do not spend wildly. We don't make, um, flippant decisions about how to use the dollars. We try to be really strategic. We try to make sure that they're student focused and that we're using them the right way, because community colleges, Johnson County aside, community colleges run lean and meat. We don't have a lot of extra flexibility. And so I'm going to defend this conversation and say that we don't just make, you know, rash decisions about how to spend dollars. We're trying to be strategic and meet deferred maintenance needs, old HVAC, ADA kinds of things. Um, and, and you've seen those lists since last fall. Our facilities folks know these buildings inside and out, and they know what the needs are. And we've got the campus master plan that tells us that as well. So we aren't just putting that information together, uh, by flying by the seat of our pants.
And it was not my intent to, to question what that decision was. My, my comment was more, we shouldn't be spending time discussing or criticizing a decision that was made eight years ago that
No, I get it.
That, that we are where we are right now. I don't want spending time fighting about.
I would bring up a point of the idea of that last statement by Dr. Pearl was, we don't spend a lot of money and we're very careful. You're very careful, but you don't have the data. You don't know what's what.
So you can't, what do you mean?
Can't prove it.
On every location, Council Grove, McConnell, you guys have not had the data at your fingertips when decisions were made. They're constantly being made. Here we are getting ready to approve a $50 million budget after approving BKD analysis in November. And that'll be done sometime this fall for next year, hopefully. That's, I mean, we're making yearly decisions, not having all the data. I don't call that responsible a way to run a business.
Well, here's what I would say, you know, the times that we've put data in front of you and then come back with revisions because we've corrected information. Then we get, we get hammered because we've changed things. The BKD information is back. It's being reviewed by the deans. It's being reviewed internally because we want to make sure that we put in front of you is accurate information and that everybody understands how those figures have come about, because the worst thing we want to do is put an initial report in front of you and then figure out that there's something internally that's wrong with those dollars. And then we have to come back and correct it, because then you will remind us every single time that we've made a mistake and we haven't given you accurate data. So we're doing a deep dive and a review right now. The deans, um, have you, have the deans had a chance to look at it yet? Next week, the deans will get to look at it and sort through it and make sure that, that the numbers that were, that were input are correct.
We're being told as taxpayers, this college needs every dime it takes, and every dime it takes generates 5X benefit to our community. And we just have to bend over and take it, because we all know what we're doing here, and we can justify every dime, which we can't.
I think there's a bigger issue too, though, like what Kent was saying. And I don't know, there has to be a way, there has to be a discussion to start making this happen. If the state, not if, the state has unequivocally underfunded community colleges for 20 years. They changed laws, things happen, this is where we're at. It makes no logical sense that only the counties that have community colleges have to suffer and then spread the, the benefit to all the counties that don't have community colleges. There has to be some sort of concerted effort, and I don't know if it's a, you know, meeting of the college, community college presidents or whatever, but you're going to have to inflict pain on the, on the counties that don't have community colleges and give sincere and obvious benefits to those that do until the state sees fit to make it equitable. Because where we're at right now is, we can argue all day long, but logic does say if inflation is going up and costs are going up, then we have to absorb that. But there is a breaking point where it makes it sincerely non-desirable or undesirable to own a house in Butler County, especially as compared to Cedric. That's already here, and that's only going to get worse. So to me, that this tax discussion, I, I agree with everything Shelby says, but it's not, it's not the fix long-term. And something has to happen on a greater level, or the community colleges just can't survive in the current, in the current.
The legislature.
We have to continue to work on the legislators.
The legislators.
Because they changed.
A reason to.
But they changed it in 2001, I believe.
But if, if every community, and I know this is drastic, and I know it would cause everybody to be like, oh, we can't do this for two or three years. But if you flat cut off enrollment to outside your college or outside your county, or you made the, the cost to go to school here triple what it is if you live in that county, you would see changes. You would see your legislatures wake up and pay attention. And until you do something like that, they're not going to care.
And you would put community colleges out of business.
If, that's going out of business anyway.
No, we're not. We're not going out of business.
Because enrollment's doing this.
There's, there's 18.
Where do, where do you think that the, where do you think this, where do you think the, the 80% of out of, of, of out of county students, what percentage roughly are coming from Cedric County?
Eighty.
No, 80% are out of county.
Seventy. Seventy.
So 70%, where do you think those 70% students go if Butler becomes unaffordable?
Which?
They go to WSU Tech.
They're going to go.
Yeah, we're not, we're not making.
It's not our problem, at least.
Well, it is our problem, because we don't get them back.
We compete with.
Don't yell. So let me, let me tell you, let me tell you, Esam, uh, ran a report, I don't know, not too long ago for me, and I asked him, tell me the, the top programs, just with the out-district students, the top programs that are out-district students enrolling. You want to know what the number one program is? It's nursing.
Right.
We have almost 900 students that are out-district students that are enrolled in our nursing program and pre-nursing.
Have a phenomenal nursing program.
They have an LPN program. They have an LPN program.
Can they absorb 900 students overnight?
No, they can't.
That's my point. If, if they, if those people just all of a sudden can't go to school, they can't afford to, they have to do something, and it forces the legislatures to wake up. I, I don't understand this operation out of fear, like they just can't change anything, and we just got to keep going to the taxpayer when every chart says, okay, we're going to run out of savings if we don't keep raising taxes. And so it's like, but at what point does Butler County as a whole just become?
If our legislatures, if our legislators aren't pushing for this right now, knowing the problem exists, what in the world makes you think that a couple hundred students that have to find somewhere else for a nursing program are going to move the needle?
You just said 900 come from Cedric County, and if that's.
No, 900 are in the program total, the bulk are from Cedric County.
Out of district, not from Butler County, out of district.
But that, that is not going to, if our legislators don't recognize this problem and are taking steps to fix it right now, this isn't going to move the needle.
Counties that don't have community colleges that have no vested interest in anything changing. If their students, their children are no longer able to partake in this program, then all of a sudden they have a vested interest in something changes, changing, and then they talk to their legislature. That's, that's when changes get made. I'm not saying.
Would have to be, would have to be a change across the state, like you talked about, but I can tell you honestly that, uh, 18 other community colleges would, would not do that. We would be the only one that would.
Has anybody ever even proposed?
Oh, I've talked about it, I've talked about it with the presidents, I just mentioned it to the other presidents, and they, they depend on their out-district students just like we do. They're not going to cut themselves off.
So I guess I'm just concerned because this is a COVID-19 year, we got all this money, now we want more. I mean, there's just no end to it, and yet our enrollment is declining, and I'm, I know marketing people probably work really hard to get the stats up, but the, the problem is, there are colleges that are in our shoes that are leveling off on enrollment and are actually increasing them. They're not declining, they're increasing. So we're doing something.
Who's increasing?
We're, we're doing something. Go look at the stats yourself, I don't hear, I'm not here to point you towards.
Let's not yell.
All you have to do.
WSU Tech has maybe increased only because they've, they've hammered the Wichita School.
You asked to increase.
But, but then, uh, you know, they're still going to have to go through what we go through, they're going to have to hire extra staff, they're going to have to get, you know.
They're doing it without taxpayer funds.
Well, they're doing it with some kind of funds.
Right, it's not mine.
It's probably Wichita State's funds, you know.
As long as it's not Shelby's or mine.
I had two points here. The administration's proposal is to go from, by their 2025, from 13 million a year to 16 million a year with no increases of any, students of any kind, while continuing to give raises. And to speak out of turn, I probably shouldn't say anything, when garage sale shopping on Saturday, Kristi Williams Garage Sale, who fought really hard, I know she's not a like commodity around here, she fought really hard to get us that 3.4 million, I'm like, well, the college's plan is to raise 1.3 million next year. That does not encourage a state legislature to work really hard for us, but that's how they get repaid. That was.
Kristi did vote in favor of that, but there was a lot of work that Heather Morgan and the folks did behind the scenes.
I'm just saying, that does not encourage state legislators to, to really work for us, if that's.
So. She has mentioned.
I find it hard to believe you're supporting giving this money out, if you're.
I'm not saying.
The colleges to get it back.
I'm not saying give money back. What Kim said earlier is, we've been given an additional 3.4 of taxpayer money, Kansan's money. That's not good enough, because we'll need it for any day. We're also going to take 1.3 from the local Butler County-only taxpayers in addition, because we want to have a bigger cushion. Because.
Because we're spending more.
Because it makes us feel better about our business.
Not, I don't, I don't want to stifle this question, just to remind everybody, we do have a, we have a special meeting with, with time to spend for that, so. We can spend as much time on this as people want to, but we still have more to do. Kim, was there anything else that you wanted to make?
The only other thing I would, uh. Can find it here. Want to point out, it's on CR7. Um, so this is our plan, we're spending, uh, some of our reserves over the next few years, uh, for deferred maintenance. And then, you just take a look at, um, I, I think we've covered everything pretty well. And, you know, obviously, um, next decision point will be at the next board meeting. We'll go from there. We would be happy to answer any questions, you know, if you'd like to call me or email me, face, between now and then.
Do take some time.
Kim, it doesn't go to you. Just saying the rules are.
Yeah, it would be better if you went through Kim.
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't mean to, uh, talk about the wrong channel.
I would, um, encourage you to look at the, um, operating budgets, uh, information on five and six, because that also shows, you know, budget, uh, projections, when you don't, when we don't, uh, see the revenue neutral rate, so that gives you an idea also of, of what those budgets, uh, look like, so.
But it can't be an administration's only plan, or only possible plan is to raise taxes, because we can't generate revenue any other way. This is a administration probably paid over a million dollars a year to run this company, and our only answer is, well, we'll just take some more tax money because we need it.
Again, you're making it sound, you're making it sound like we just sort of fly by the seat of our pants, and that we aren't paying close attention to being good stewards and trying to manage the budget in the right way. I, I don't, I, I, we do take a lot of time, Shelby, to look at this. This is just information for discussion. This is not.
We make a decision in three weeks.
This is not.
We don't have.
Set in stone. You guys get to make the final decision. We are giving you our input.
I get it.
You've got, you've got, uh, a team of administrators that have more than 200 years of community college experience running budgets, running operations.
Then why do I not have a better?
And we're trying to put in front of you the best recommendation that we can give you based on our experience and knowledge of running the operations of community colleges.
But this is no plan with a chart like this that could be drawn by a fourth grader, like, well, if we don't get more tax money, we run out of money. It's like, that's not a good.
Because that's, there's no. That's how schools are funded.
Well, then they need to change.
Showing you projections.
I know, and I had the same conversation a month and a half ago, and here's the same chart with one data point of taxpayer money. There's no, we're spending $500,000 for advertising, and then by 2025, we expect 0% of students. And we expect the same exact percentage of credit hours that we haven't achieved in the last eight years. It's like, this is just, it is flying by the seat of your pants. You do one year's budget, you see what happened, all right, well, we'll do something next year. Then that year goes by, what did we do? Well, that's what we did, and then we just need some more taxpayer money. That's not a way to run this kind of business.
I, I would like to say that, and it's in here, you can look it up, that we have lowered the mill levy by 24% in the last three years. 24% in the last three years, and we've lowered taxes by over $2 million, around $2 million in the last two years.
In actual true facts, this board raised the capital mill out levy for IT, 1.9 mills, which was $2 million a year, boom, boom, boom. That sunset, that is not a tax cut.
That is a tax cut, Shelby, are you saying that deferred maintenance is not, are you saying that deferred maintenance is not a legitimate cost to the college, because that was deferred maintenance?
You're talking about dropping the mill levy.
When you, when you don't, when you don't fund deferred maintenance, then you come up to a point in time where you have to go in debt, and that's when we went in debt. So that is a legitimate tax.
It's not, it's not a.
That is tax that was cut, and it wasn't, it wasn't renewed. Most colleges renew their capital outlay budget on and on, because they take care of the deferred maintenance from that levy. So I don't, I don't think it's pushing to us about the capital outlay not being a legitimate tax, does anybody any good?
It was a tax that sunset, it wasn't a tax that was cut. The tax that was cut was two years ago.
I didn't say, I said the taxes were reduced.
It's still the same, they weren't, they were, they were.
Taxes have been reduced.
Yeah, they were, they were increased and then allowed to reduce. Four of us voted two years ago to actually cut taxes 400,000. Last year, we voted to keep them the same, which is also not a cut. That mill levy went down, that was not a mill levy reduction by the board. That was a zero-sum increase, zero dollar, not a single penny went up. Mill levy went down, that's, that's a mill levy decrease, yes, that's not a tax decrease.
The taxes did decrease by that much.
Not last year, last year the tax, the year before is 12.9, 12.9.
It's in here.
Well, the first year, we sunset the, the mill and cut 400 grand. Last year, they stayed exactly the same, 12.9, it stayed 12.9, there was no crease of any kind, that's not a cut.
Thank you, Kent. Let, let's move on, everybody. Any other, any other questions for Kent?
Well, I would have, I would have, I'd like to get this a little bit earlier, and we could, you know, we could have it done. Maybe we could send it out by mail.
Kent finished it up this afternoon, Julie. He's been working on it since last week. And I made some, I may ask him to make some changes. No, I may ask him to make some changes to it this, uh, uh, last night, to rearrange some of the order of it, and so he finished it up today. The only.
We try very hard to get information to you, especially when you're going to make decisions in advance. We're not asking you to make any decision on this. We want to walk through this information with you so you have the background to make the decision at the next board meeting.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
And I appreciate the fact that I do think that the, the deans and, and so forth in the administration try hard to, I guess, maintain the budget and save money and cut costs, but it's hard when I don't see the tools in your portfolio by which these can be done.
So how do you create and educate, how do you measure, other than the number of graduates we have? How do you measure that student is widget, because there are a lot of school districts and everybody else trying to do it. They are not a widget, and this is not a widget-driven.
Okay, I'm trying to explain, and I understand that this is not how you're used to flowing, because, you know, I, I understand your time has always been with the school district.
Not always.
This is how school districts work, but my point is, what we've asked for, for two years is more data, and we don't have them, and that's the only thing I could say. We have data, but it's not really there yet. It may be partial data. It may be data that looks good to you, but for, to a business person, it's not all there, and that's why I said what BKD, uh, was in line to do is really important. We should be able to have all this in the database that the board members can even access and say, hey, how much went to count 7:30, or how much went to that organization last year? Shouldn't be a big secret, but I get it, that's not how academics run, but that's how we roll in the business world, and we have to have accurate information.
Well, I will tell you that I have a friend in the business world who came up to me last week and told me he was donating $50,000 to Butler Community Colleges Foundation.
And that has to do with the budget, because?
I'm just telling you that there are people who believe in this institution.
No, that's amazing. I think that's how it should work, people voluntarily donate.
More than that here, we wouldn't have to pay the salaries to the foundation.
Well, you have a misunderstanding about how that works, Julie, as well. Foundation pays for part of the salaries, the college pays for part of the salaries. Kent, Kent shared that information with you through a core request.
The totals, yes, but to be honest with you, I kind of asked for the, some kind of a, a table that was just not total. And I also asked how it correlated to the 990 reports filed by the foundation, or if any of those numbers matched half of the numbers or part of the numbers.
I don't file the 990s to the foundation.
Let's move into our special meeting, everybody. We're kind of off track, yes. Okay.
And I had a question regarding the executive session, is it only?